Call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Second. Then we should second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item is a consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
We move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Opposed, nay?
I'm staying. I wasn't here. Can't approve it.
What are you, abstaining, what?
I'm sustaining. The minutes are in there and I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't here, so.
Next, is there anybody from the public like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? None. Special reports presentation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thanks.
Want to step forward?
Sure.
So this is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for 2023. I'll read it.
Okay, okay.
Whereas in the United States, more than 10 million adults experience domestic violence annually with an average of 19,000 calls per day received by domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas in the state of Kansas, one domestic violence incident occurs every 23 minutes and one domestic violence murder occurs every 11 days. With one domestic violence arrest by law enforcement being made every 47 minutes. Whereas in Baldwin City, Kansas, 12 incidents of domestic violence were reported to law enforcement in 2022. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but also by communities and the nation as a whole. Whereas Baldwin City joins with others across the state of Kansas nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them and holding offenders accountable in our community. Now, therefore, I KC 700 Mayor of Baldwin City proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in recognition of the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates and allies in service of the survivors and the victims they serve, I encourage all citizens to actively engage in the scheduled activities and events sponsored by the Willow Domestic Violence Center and other organizations working toward an eradication of domestic violence.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Did you want me to say?
Yeah.
I just want to thank the council, the city of Baldwin, the staff. Everyone in the city has been really welcoming and very engaged in working with the Willow and we appreciate that very much. We're here to serve your community. I am the rural outreach coordinator, so I serve Baldwin, Udora primarily, a little bit of La Compton and I do take clients in Lawrence on an overflow basis as needed, which is highly needed at this point. So I just want to say thank you for letting me come here today, for doing the proclamation and just for your continued support. For those of you who may not know, the Willow serves all survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking in Douglas, Franklin and Jefferson counties. And we also serve survivors of human trafficking in 10 other counties. So if anyone in your community needs our services or you know of anyone who needs our services, please feel free to give them my name. My name is Maggie Bornhold. I should have said that to begin with. I think I've met most of you. But feel free to give us their name or give them our name, our hotline number. I can give anybody who needs literature. I have lots of resources to do that. I try to leave them at the library. I'm also in Baker. I have office hours at Baker every Wednesday afternoon and I usually table for an hour on Wednesdays in the unions. So if you know any college students at Baker who need services, that's where to find me. But our hotline is 24/7. So thank you again. I really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Is there any reference to this on the website? Can we get to that hotline number on the website anywhere as a resource? Do we have it? Can we get it?
The resource is available. The main resource touch point here in Baltimore is the library.
Okay.
And that is something that you do have.
Okay. So someone we're looking for them or this type of resource, they can get to our website, get to the library and find it.
Yes, sir. Okay. Next, new business, MIH resolution. So this is from our presentation last meeting for the MIH for the apartment complex. That is what I call a marlot. That proposed contractor who'd like to build. Scott, just to give you a rundown, they came and presented to us at the last meeting. They completed the entire application without city help. Our only requirements is a pass or resolution to support for their application. And I believe they have an opportunity to get up to $600,000 in grant funding for the apartment complex.
Yeah, up to. That's correct.
So that's kind of what this is.
You like that? Need to go to the planning commission?
When they, when they put in for their building. They still have to follow the rundown. This is just the final. Is there anybody from the public like to speak to this as your item? None? Council discussion.
Do we need to change the agenda? What was the city commission? Welcome to the city commission and you got a city council.
Commission and council are putting in.
I know. I just thought.
Dakota, do you know if that would need to be changed? Does it matter if it's called city commission or city council?
For it to be, for it to match all the language and what we're introducing.
I don't know if we just want to change the city council. Work on that. If make a motion, you want to.
We have a motion.
I move to change the order for the resolution to change city commission to city council. And approve as mentioned.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Next item on the agenda is our trash bids. So we put out an RFP. It went to our website and on Facebook. I solicit some trash bids. Find people with green environmental.
Green Environmental Services.
Green Environmental.
Yes, sir.
Were the sole bidders. We did the bid opening, I think on Tuesday. And then, I'll be honest with the council, shortly after, or the day after, found out that there was apparently no notification to any of the other service providers. It just went on Facebook and website. I contemplated pulling it from the agenda. Here's a request that we leave it on, so we left it on. But we did have another service invite or contact animal that did want to be on, so I just wanted to put everything out there.
We only received one bid.
I'm gonna let the bidders present to the council.
Yep.
And then you want to kind of explain your bid to the council.
Absolutely. First, you know Brenda Ferguson is our office manager. We purchased Audible Sanitation back in 2018. And Brenda Ferguson was part of the family, original family that started that. And she said that we had been picking up trash in Baldwin for 40 years. So, which I thought was, was pretty, you know, pretty impressive. So leading off with that, we greatly appreciate you guys and love Baldwin and want to stay, want to stay here and continue to be your garbage person. Unfortunately, as you know, costs have went through the roof. I mean, everything has skyrocketed. Oils, trucks, parts, wages, and it's tough out there. It's tough out there. I don't know if any of y'all have saw some of the challenges in Johnson County. Johnson County, a lot of the communities in Johnson County can't even get their garbage picked up right now. I mean, garbage companies are struggling. They're really struggling.
Billion, multi-billion dollar companies can't pick it up.
So anyway, we had to deliver the bad news, you know, that the rates, that the rates were going up. The contract expires January 31st. We wanted to come up. We wanted to get in front of it. We wanted you guys to be able to get in front of this. So we met with Glenn back in June or July and let him know so the city had, you know, you know, time to put the bid, put it out for bid. So that being said, John, you want to go through the numbers?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So if you want to start, just I'm curious for the council and for me, because I didn't ask you guys. What communities do you serve?
Wellsdale, Linden, gosh, a whole bunch of Williamsburg.
I was just curious. I did.
Pomona.
Pomona, yeah. Quinte Mo. We picked up, we picked up 29 towns. There's actually a list of them in that proposal.
Okay.
Picked up 29 towns in Kansas. We've got Oklahoma Division picks up six or seven, eight. We've got same number in Arkansas. I think 29 in Kansas. A whole bunch of little towns.
Okay, so where would you like me to start at?
I would just start at the top, kind of what we're charged now, what it's going to, what services the council will have the option to either include in the base fee, not include the base fee. It's been five years since we've went through these.
Sure, sure, sure. Do you have the old rates? I don't have the old rates on my, in my, in my, I don't.
11, 12 degrees? 1250 a home and then 350 a month for recycling, just the homes that recycle.
So that rate goes from 1250 a home to 350 for recycle. On our five-year bid, it goes to 1699 for garbage collection with one cart and 395 for recycle, the way you're currently doing it. And that would be, everyone, everyone would be billed for recycle and would get a cart for recycle. We also have the proposal of $12 a house for recycle and that's just the people that the people who are charged for that would be the people that participated in the recycle. So they'd have to request that service.
And the reason that is, is we pay the same to dump the recycling at the recycle facility as we do for disposal. So $49 a ton. And when you just pick up the people that participate, you still have to drive up and down every street in the whole city. And that, I mean, it's, you drive by every house. So that's the reason that it's $12. I mean, that's, it costs you the same to drive through town, you know, east time anyway. Plus there's a cart.
Also, yeah, also to mention, every house would receive one trash cart with a 1699 price. And one, if every, if the 395 option, every house would receive a cart as well, a recycle cart as well. That would be picked up once per month. So the $12 option, the people who subscribe to that service would receive one, one cart, one recycle cart as well as their trash cart. And then also in this proposal is $5.34 for bulky pickup. That's a service that we provide once per month. Every house would get a bulky waste pickup. So your, your stove, your microwave, you know, a little bit of brush or lumber that you have, you put it out once a month and we'll come by and pick that up.
Two cubic yards.
Up to, up to two cubic yards.
Which is about the size of a pickup truck.
Yeah.
That is included in the 1250.
Do what now?
The bulky pickup is included.
It is, it is now. It is now. But you know, like we talked about in Johnson, you know, in Johnson County, we have to automate, you know, due to our insurance. I mean, that's where we're headed. And throw words, the guys that ride on the back, it's just, it's just, it's impossible to find those people. So insurance, safety reasons, you know, so that's why we're going to an automated service and a bulky pickup once per month.
We do that in several communities. It works great. Works great. Eliminates the need for having the cleanup days like we're having next weekend with all the roll-off boxes and stuff. And you currently, was it last weekend? Okay.
Yeah.
So it also, when you, when you have roll-off boxes, basically only 20% of the people in town, the people that have pickup trucks and stuff get to utilize that roll-off service, unless they take it in their trunk. And that's just based on how many people have pickup trucks in town. I just looked it up on, I asked Siri. A lot of the 21% of people in Kansas have pickup trucks. So it's, it really, the little ladies, they never get to do bulky waste. And they have leaves and sticks and, you know, stuff out of their garden, stuff like that. But with this service, we pick it up at the house once a month. It's worked great in every community we've done it in. So.
How is it done now? Because I don't know.
It just, they just throw it out there and we pick it up.
So if I threw out a bunch of two-by-four construction material, they'd just pick it up now?
We've, we've been picking that up, yes. And that's, and that's, that's part of the problem. You got, you got people with 10, 10 trash cans and then piles, I mean piles, and we're cleaning, we're cleaning it up.
So do we have a maximum number of trash cans now?
You can get all you want, but you'll pay for each one.
No, he's talking about, he's talking about currently.
Yeah.
Right now, right now, we're just taking everything at the curb and, and we're losing on a lot of those, a lot of those deals. I don't know if you drive up and down, you know, garbage, garbage day. This, this puts everything in a cart. The town, it'll make the town look so much nicer. You know, once a month, everybody will get a bulky so they can get rid of those bulky items. It, it, it just makes the town look a lot better, a lot cleaner, a lot more uniform as, when you're driving through town. So.
Just to clarify, you just get one cart? Anything more?
You get one cart.
What do you change for the change?
Yes. And then you can call and get, request additional carts at, at city hall.
You're talking about a residence, is that correct?
Yes, sir. All, this is all.
We were talking commercial.
Businesses are all billed individually. They, it's all subscription so they can go with whoever they, they can go with whoever they choose. So this has nothing to do with the commercial pickup. So.
How much was the bulky pickup for once a month proposed for the new contractor?
$5.34.
And is that opt-in, like the recycling?
No, it's, it's, it's all, it's all or none. And, and look, I would encourage you, the mayor had said, you know, said we might not want that bulky pickup. I wouldn't encourage that because here's what I'm gonna tell you what's happening in our experience. People have garbage and they're going to get rid of it, some, one way, shape or form, right? It's going to end up, it's going to end up in your businesses dumpsters or on the side of the road if they don't. This is, this gives them a place to get rid of it. There's no excuses, right? So.
We had, so the council has a choice to eliminate the recycling or the bulky. We've discussed all this.
Yeah.
In pretty, pretty decent depth.
Yeah.
Tuesday. And we did feel like bulky probably should be included. A lot of people do have, they have to change out. But I want to be clear what we're talking about. So people who don't opt in for the recycling right now, if that becomes mandatory and the bulky becomes mandatory with a $5 increase in the base fee, we're talking 15 bucks a month on everyone's utility bills. Extra. Extra.
And that, that is, that is exactly true.
We even have the rate hikes though, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
He's talking our city.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think, just, just to clarify, there's a 1699 for the five-year. We also gave a seven and a 10-year. And it goes from 1699 to 1673 for seven and 1647 for a 10-year. And then the recycling stays the same price. There's no break on it. And there's not much of a break on the bulky. It's 534 to 530 to 526.
But there is an escalator built in to tie to the.
There is. So, and that's, that's the problem. That's where we're, where we're at today, right? We haven't done price increases for so long. We've gotten upside down in this contract. So we have escalators built in there and it, and it's really, it's driven by our cost and it's, it's the, it's driven by CPI, Consumer Price Index, which is the government, you know, basically the, the calculation for inflation. Then there's, there's disposal and then there's a fuel surcharge in there. Now, the fuel surcharge is in your contract, the way we have it, it goes up or down and it's calculated once a year. So you're at 436, I think I looked at it. So if it goes down, the fuel surcharge will go down. And as I said, it's calculated annual because you can't, you can't change people's prices, you know, every month. But that goes up or down. The landfill only goes up as, as our cost goes up, which is, we review that once a year. We don't, every time the landfill goes up, we're not going to come in here and ask for, ask for increase.
And we learned that with cities because they had to change the prices in the system every time. If you, you know, oh, fuel's going up, well, they're like, you can't change it every month, right? It's.
And how many of the cities do you guys currently serve take part in the bulky and/or the recycle? All of it?
Six, seven, eight, probably. Eight biggers.
Do the majority take? Just the bulky or do they take both bulky and recycling?
Probably, probably the last 12 cities I've done, I've, I've worked for a publicly traded company before I did this. And probably the last dozen bids I've done, they all have, they all have automated pickup with a bulky, with a bulky pickup. And, and they love it because it helps clean up the town. So the recycling, that just depends on the market. Because some of these rural towns that we do, there's just no option to, there's no option to take the, there's nowhere to take the recycling too. There's no, you know, it's not like here where there's a recycling center down the road. There's no place to take it to. So, but.
It used to. Finland has one too.
But. The automated pickup and the bulky really works well and I would, I would encourage you to do that. And then, again, I thought your idea was, was a good idea. I mean, the, you know, the recycling voluntarily, right? Who, if you want it, you pay for it. If you don't, you don't, you don't, right? So we haven't offered that before. It's been an all or none, all or none deal. And you do get some grumbling from the people who, who don't. And, and the other, the other part to that is, is contamination. I mean, to be successful, you got to eliminate your contamination. The people that really want it and are going to pay for it, they're not going to contaminate it. The people that you force it on, they're going to contaminate. And guess what? Once you start contaminating the loads, then your rates start, your rates start going up because, you know, it all goes hand in hand.
More and more on the tonnage.
I was gonna say, so, so let's say somebody does recycling, they throw their normal, normal trash in a bag in that recycler. You guys aren't checking it when you dump it in the truck?
We can't because it's automated. So it's, we see it in a camera, but it's, it's all, it's already in there. We can't, we, safety reasons, we can't get it out. And.
They would get us at the recycle center.
They get.
They would reject our load.
Yep.
And they would charge us a handling fee and all that stuff that goes with that to get that out. Or they'd pull that back out.
They allow a small percentage. They expect a small percentage, right? But when it starts getting too much, then, then they reject, they have to go back and get it, which is a disaster or, you know, our cost goes up.
And there was, there was a study done in Little Rock, Arkansas, Plaski County, actually. 80% of the recycling was contaminated. It was a second trash can. They, Waste Management did that and posted that. 80% of their recycling was very contaminated. Pizza boxes, you know, pizza crust and stuff in it, it doesn't, doesn't go, but.
Sure.
You just have to step up so we can, citizens can hear you on the mic.
I wanted to add that, so the 1250 to the 1699 seems like quite a jump. A lot of people, if you want a trash can now, you have to contact Audible Sanitation and it's an individual bill for $5 a month through us. So a lot of citizens are already paying.
There's about 200 people that already pay.
1750. A benefit of the carts, and this is a problem in Baldwin, and Amory will attest to this, is we're hard on carts, you know, it's a garbage cart. People are hard on their carts, we're hard on carts. And then they call me and they say, you broke my cart. That was a $200 trash can. But when everybody has our carts, and this, it's like this in every other city. They call us or call the city hall and they say, hey, my cart's broke. And I say, hey, I'll replace it tomorrow, free of charge. It's my cart, you know?
And that's the, you know, the benefit of us doing that. We have a 10-year warranty on our carts. You go buy one at Lowe's, you don't have a 10-year warranty. And they're the same cart, and a lot of them are, a lot of times they're the same carts, right? So we dump them and we break them. There's nothing we, there's nothing we can do. There's nothing they can do and they want us to replace the carts.
But essentially, a lot of people are already paying that rate. We just want everybody to have carts so we can also do the automated thing and that doesn't work when you've got three 30-gallon containers.
You guys are already operating automated carts in other communities.
Yes.
We are, we are.
Linden and Ottawa, Williamsburg, Richmond.
And that's, that's, I've been doing this for years, but that's something we just implemented in this, in this area.
That's all I wanted to add though.
Thank you. Thanks, Graham. And, and really, that's, that's market-driven. I mean, we're not trying to put anybody out of work, but we, you can't find helpers these days. And like I say, if you do some research on Shawnee, Kansas and Johnson County, and I mean, they're getting killed over there. They can't, they can't even get the garbage picked up over the, I mean, it's got weeks without garbage pickup and.
And this, and all across the nation. That's just what we found 14 miles away.
And to add to that, this is, this is why we do things the way we do it. You know, the garbage list, when I got into it, was a job. And, and we all know what a job is, right? A job is what you do until you find something, you make a little bit more money and you move on. We've been able to change this and we really want to be a career. Because we want quality people in your, in your community, picking up at your schools and in your neighborhoods, you know? I mean, you're driving a $400,000 garbage truck. And, you know, we, we want people that are, that are long-term, good guys and, and we that make a good living and have health insurance and retirement. And so we want to take care of our people and have good people here.
So if, if we don't have one of your carts, then you won't pick up our trash?
Well, you'll be provided, at that time, you'll be provided a cart.
It's part of the.
It's part of the price, it's part of the price, it's built into the price here now. So when the contract changes, you'll get a cart and that's included in your price.
So that's because of the automation portion, right?
Yes.
It has to pick up that specific.
That's correct. That's correct.
So COVID, the residential trash about doubled. I mean, everybody was working from home. There weren't any price increases then. We, we never missed a day. Every day.
So to clarify, is there a limit to how many trash cans that somebody can have?
Absolutely not. They can get as many as they want, they want to get.
If that $5 increase.
They have to, they have to, I mean, they have to pay, they pay the monthly rate, but they can get as many as they need to get.
And the monthly rate goes up?
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
And it's $5 per cart?
It's.
It's, we actually have it in here as $9 and I did that. So I can, I can tell you, we could probably lower that second cart charge. Because I put it in there to de, you know, to try to get people to recycle. I mean, a lot of the RFP was about the incentives to recycle.
And that's what we thought that you guys wanted, right, is, is to push recycling harder.
I didn't know that price was going to be the number one issue. So.
But that's just, that's just kind of what we were hearing, right?
It wasn't on the proposal I've worked on for three weeks.
We talked a couple bucks here.
So.
So, okay, so I want to back up then.
We're, we're, we would be, we would be open to solve, you know, to dropping those rates on the second cart. Because we want to make it easier on people to get second carts, right?
So does, so the second cart, you said it was $9 and you're, now you're saying it would go to five. What about the third cart? Still the same price?
Same price.
What about the base fee? Does that change?
No. No, the base, the base fee will stay the same. So, so just, just for example, 1699 plus you get two carts, right? You're going to, you're going to 2599. Did I say that right? 212699. So.
Well, one cart, the bulk pickup is 2233. So if you got, if you didn't just, the base fee plus full and another card, you'd be at 27.
Yeah. Three, you'd have three carts then.
Didn't recycle and a garbage?
No, I didn't include recycling.
Okay.
If I included recycling.
Oh, five.
With two carts, then it'd be at 3128.
Got you. Good.
So, so I pulled up the city of Lawrence to see where they were. And, and we're basically less than they are. They don't have bulky waste in their number. They're 2272 or something like that. I handed out all my pamphlets, but.
2272.
Yeah. And then they, they charge $4, $5 for a second 95-gallon cart. And then they charge for bulky waste. If they come and pick up at your house, you know, pick up a pile, they charge you accord, they take a picture and charge you accordingly. So. So, and they're winning all kinds of awards for their service and what they're doing. I, I found that on the internet, so.
And these are sixty five gallon carts?
Not ninety. Ninety five.
Oh, so. Oh, I'm looking at Lawrence, sorry.
So a ninety five gallon cart is equal to five point six, you know, or six of those recycle bins that we have now. So it'll hold, you know, a lot more. It'll hold, you know, six tons basically.
Not quite the size of two fifty five gallon trucks, right? So it kind of gives you some of the reference off of.
And most people have used the fifty five gallon, maybe multiple of them, but it sounds like that would be almost two of those.
Right.
Trying to gauge whether the second cart would be eaten by most people.
I don't think it probably would. I mean, I have, you know, kids, so I sometimes do.
You know, our, our goal in this process was to get to the table as part of our proposal to where we could negotiate, you know, find out what you guys wanted and then negotiate where we needed to be. Our numbers, I, I can't apologize for those. That's what they came out to. Need a automated truck, I put a quote in there for a truck, four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. But that's where, that's where the industry's headed. It's the fifth most dangerous business there is.
So to clarify, is, so will trash, will trash pickup still be weekly?
Yes, yes.
Recycling is currently being paid by this?
It'll be monthly, yes.
Yeah.
And the bulky, and the bulky waste will be monthly.
And the bulky waste right now is weak.
Yeah.
Well, it just goes with, it all goes, it all goes in one truck, right? Not the recycling, but the bulky and everything goes together. It's the same. Yeah, it goes weekly, so.
We broke the, we broke the city up into three areas. Approximately five hundred homes an area and then recycling. So the first week, you know, month, actually start right here, because this is February. But area three, trash. So area one, trash, area two, trash, area three, trash. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then every Friday would be bulky waste. So area one, area two, area three.
Look, we haven't, we haven't finalized, I mean, that's just, that's just kind of an example. We hadn't finalized those. We're going, we're going through that to make sure we do it, you know?
There's a picture of the area, and I just drew some areas that look. Right, we, we'll count the homes and do all the stuff that.
Make sure the routes are balanced and.
Right.
So.
Some of this is going to change. And once you've got pickups, pickup hazards now.
Well, that's, that's just, that's just an example. So that, that's not, that's not the finalized deal. But when we get ready, when we, as we're working through this and we get the map finalized, we will notify all the residents by Facebook. And what we do is when we set the carts, we'll have a flyer that tells everyone everything and has, has a clear cut map on who's in what area and what days your pickup are. Very specific instructions.
That's all right.
It'll be, it'll be on your cart when we deliver it to you.
We'll make sure you know. But it, but it is, these, these boundaries may change a little bit. But we would count the homes to make sure they're bound. So make sure there's five hundred homes, fifteen hundred homes approximately. We make sure there's five hundred in each area. So they scoot over a street, right? Or a street this way or a street that way.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
But you'll, you'll get, you'll get, even if you don't have Facebook, it'll be on your cart. That's where we do, most of the people get it is it's on their cart.
Yeah. And we make sure, we'll work with the staff to make sure that that's done exactly how they want it done and how you guys want it done.
When we deliver the cart, there's a little package, a little package right on top. People come out there and say, what, what's this? So they'll get it, the instructions, the map, everything, everything will be right there. And then you got, you know, that's the percentage of people, they take it and throw it in, in the trash and then they're like, I don't know where my trash is.
Twelve or thirteen years of service in Bristow, Oklahoma, we had little bags that we put on the handle, garbage cart. There's still some hanging there today that I can't believe. It's a true statement.
Would it, we currently run two route, two day routes today in the current contract or is it three? I mean, is this Monday, Wednesday?
Yeah, they're not, they're not the right day. So we're running Monday and Wednesday, right?
So it's currently two days and you're.
And they pick up a little bit on Friday too. So we got, we got like four or five trucks come to town. A lot, a lot of what this does, it'll eliminate a lot of traffic on your streets, a lot of truck turn in and stuff, but you'll get the same stuff picked up with, with less exposure for the public, for the citizens and on the streets. And garbage trucks are hard on streets.
So what about, um, one question I do get often from citizens is hazardous wastes. This cans and different things like that. We don't have an option.
So, so residential trash is excluded from all hazardous waste. I mean, residential waste is the worst waste there is. Period. And I mean, all the chemicals and stuff you throw away and flush down your toilet and, you know, it's, it's the worst waste there is. But the federal government excluded residential waste from hazardous waste. But Douglas County has a hazardous waste trailer and stuff that'll come around on weekends and pick up. You know all about that, don't you?
Pretty much, yeah.
They have a, they have a method for getting rid of paint and stuff like that.
There's, yeah, there's programs that'll come set up, they'll come set up on a weekend and, you know, you advertise and people can bring their paints and things like that to them.
We, we do that in Cherryvale.
And drips, drips out of the truck and on the street, you can see.
The other thing is also to fix that problem, the automated trucks are more sealed. They don't, they don't leak like the rearload trucks. They don't drip like the rearload trucks do. So when you do get that occasional motor oil, we don't, well, but we get it. When you do get that or a little, some paint, it doesn't, it doesn't run out, run out and on your streets. So that does fix that issue.
With the carts, with the carts, they, with the lids on every cart being basically the same, us fixing them, I mean, they should all have a lid and lid should be closed. And that prevents a lot of rainwater into the trash also. So. It also, I mean, the carts, I, I saw, I read an article yesterday or the day before, the city of New York is putting in an order for three point one million carts because of what happened during COVID, people just throwing their trash out. So it stops all kinds of rats and dogs and cats and raccoons and everything from getting in the trash and spreading it all over. It, it, those carts are a big thing for your stormwater. Keeping it out of, for us, during COVID, I mean, they were saying, you know, if you get a piece of cardboard, it's going to have COVID on it. It's going to have, you catch it from plastics and different things. I mean, we still picked up trash every day. We thought we were immune, which we weren't. That, those carts are important to keep our guys from getting needle sticks and, and stuff like that. Glass, people put glass in their cans and they go to sling that bag and slices their, you know, their thighs and.
And the next time there's, there's a virus outbreak, I mean, hopefully that it ever is, or, or even a flu outbreak, right? We got one guy in a truck. We don't have three bunched up, getting themselves sick and then, you know, putting strain on us, on, on us, you know, to get the garbage picked up because everybody's out sick.
So the recycle bins like we have now, the little plastic.
Seventeen gallon bins.
What, what are the ones that we would have now?
They're ninety six gallon. So they're, they're the same size as your, your trash can.
Oh, and a lid and everything?
Yeah, and we'll pick. The lid will be yellow.
And we'll pick them up once, we'll pick them up once a month.
At, at my house, we get everybody's recycle in our yard.
Yeah.
Because it usually comes from the south and it blows.
This, this, this will fix that, this should fix that issue.
That would be worth it to me.
Yeah, this will fix that issue.
We have some new little devices, they're called lid latches, that is like, I think it, I've been a garbage man thirty four years, so. I saw this at the waste expo. It's a little plastic thing. I wish I had one in my pocket. I usually do. You drill a hole in the lid and it flips over and it keeps the can, can't fall over. It don't spill. It's a, it's, so for recycle, tho, those lightweight, you know, materials, I think those would be great. And we'll, we'll have those. I mean, they're about five dollars a piece. Uh, but they're worth it on, at my house, with the wind blows, it doesn't matter what brand of cart it is, it's turned over and the trash is, you know, blowing down to the end of the cul-de-sac.
So you guys still do roll offs and stuff or?
We do. It's, it's in that, it's in that proposal as well.
So you added glass to the recycle, which you currently don't have. Is that true?
So, so glass was in the proposal. That'd be one thing we'd like to negotiate, but it all depends on the MRF, on the recycle facility and what they're taking. And they say they take glass. It's, and it's a mistake, but.
We're, and the sad thing is we're at their mercy, right, on recycle. So if they come to us one day and say, we're not taking glass anymore, we'll have to stop taking glass. And there's just, there's nothing we can, there's nothing we can do about that as far as on the recycling side.
When you pick it up in a Packer truck, like a rearload truck we picked it up in before, it contaminates most of the other product with glass because it breaks it. These automated trucks will not break it like that.
I think our code enforcement officer, Steve, if you want to step forward, do you have a question?
I had a question. Can I ask it from here?
Sure.
We were talking about the truck, um, capability, leaks and so forth. I don't know if, if you fellows are aware, we had that incident here in Baldwin, where the paint went all the way down X Street. So these gentlemen did come right out. But my question was, how do we protect against that? And then I never did, unfortunately, never did hear back. They were going to determine if it was latex oil based. But how do you protect against something like that?
Well, that's, that's the deal with the carts. So the cart dumps in a truck and these trucks are more sealed, so they don't leak, they don't leak paint out.
But that truck did leak a lot of paint.
Yeah.
At least five gallons, if not more, it's all up and down X Street.
A lot, a lot of it has to do with educating the customer on what they can put in the can and not put in the can. And because we don't know what's in there and we can't, we don't have time to go through everybody's trash to see what's in.
We try, yeah, we do try to catch it. I mean, we don't want paint, we don't want wet paint. If at all possible. No, you're good, you're good.
They came out right away, it'd be thirty one. I never did figure out, I never did figure out anything out with this.
Do you guys have any other questions for this gentleman?
I still want to get that.
Yeah, I'll get to you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else on the public like to speak to this agenda? Now we'll close public comment, open up council discussion.
I guess kind of my first reaction is that, you know, and I recognize that we have a pretty sweet deal right now, probably, since we're at the end of our contract and those were negotiated a long time ago. And typically at the end of contracts, you're getting your better deal. But we are getting a lot less for a lot more money with this one bid that we got back. That's my initial reaction.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, I still have anything to balance against. I would see when Lawrence asks you or. But I just don't think we're doing our due diligence if we have a single bid.
Right.
And I'm not sure we get more. It sounds like we have some people interested.
That's what I was told. Amara, is that correct?
We had one that was interesting.
Is there a plan to publicize this differently or should we extend it or?
They said they reached out in twenty eighteen and asked to put them to be on our list if we ever did an RFP. We reached out to our own city clerk in twenty eighteen to ask to be put on the list for the new bid. But, um, um, I, I, Amara and I talked about this and how we can prevent something like this from happening to where the word gets out a little better because I don't, I don't believe that trash companies are probably watching our Facebook and our website. And when we go out to RFPs for building, um, building, buildings, uh, the architects have a system that notifies all those contractors. So that's the difference between the two beds from what we saw was our last RFP that we sent out this morning. So Amara and I talked and, and, um, it probably has to go down to unfortunately, taking up staff time and contacting these suppliers and saying, here, we got this RFP, are you guys interested?
So can I, that's. I mean, let's, let's talk, so if you want to keep, let, let's say most of us on average are two, two, you know, because right now, even if you go over your trash can, you can set it out next, next to it. I run a bag out and I hear the trash right coming all the time. Um, but I would get the kitchen out, that's not an option anymore. You have to fit everything. It sounds like the lid has to latch, you know? People are going to be probably getting a second barrel. So at that point, you're going from twelve dollars to twenty seven. You're, I mean, you're, you're now almost having a twenty dollar increase here. If you, if you get, if you want everything that you're getting right now, even then with some limitation. We, we have not had a rate increase that impactful.
Right.
That I can remember. And so we better get more bids.
Well, but this may be the going rate.
But we need to know that.
It may be, but I think we need, I mean, we, we've done our due diligence to try to keep utility rates.
We have known based on what we have.
Everything's going up, guys.
Anything going up.
Insurance is going up, the cost of fuel is going up, the cost of labor is going up, you know, everything's going up.
Right.
The cost of vehicles, the cost of repose of vehicles, everything's going up, everything else is going up. You know, gas is going up, you know, get somebody to fix your streets, that's going up. Everything's going up. It's, it's not a.
I think, I think I recognize that our real is not going to be twelve fifty.
Right.
I don't expect it.
We're getting a good feeling.
As much as we want it to be. So I recognize that area for sure. But I have to say, I, I kind of feel apprehensive too, just based on the information I received. And I came out of that meeting thinking, okay, maybe we need to do a ten year contract to fix this as long as we possibly can.
But it doesn't fix it. You're not, you're not saving that much. We, there's, you save a nickel. I mean, it's not, it doesn't get you. That, I mean, that, these are, this is, this is a really impactful number. I'm not, I, that's why when I first spoke, I said, I understand that we're getting a sweet deal. I know prices are going up. I know that.
There's another thing.
I'm not done talking. One second. But I know prices are going up. But we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we're getting the best deal we can. And this is still a negotiation. We can answer back if we, we, you know, if we accepted them as the bidder, then we can go into negotiations, we can say. But we need to, we need to have more leverage here than we have with one bid. You need to be able to tell the one bidder that, hey, we, we have other options here and you better come back with a sweeter deal.
I think it's important to just tell the public that you're right. We, we, we have multiple bids. This is the best, you know, best.
We've done everything we can.
Service, the price we can get.
And I can take into consideration also the service that we're receiving. I don't see anything wrong with the service. I don't see us throwing trash and stuff on the streets.
You know, I, I. I was at you at the meeting as well.
If you're looking for somebody else, you're going to have to do some research to find out in that community that they serve, how they serve and how the people take it.
No, I, it's a good point. The incumbent has the advantage of having a track record. And if it's a good track record, that helps. But still you need to have a comparable.
I don't, I'm not disagreeing with what you, what you're discussing.
You made a good point, but it's, like, we're all happy with what we've received, you know, certainly for the price that we're currently at. It's just a significant change.
And pay more for taxes. I mean, everything.
Which is why we need to make sure this goes up as little as possible.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
I think that everything is going up is more reason for us to try to contain.
Sure. I don't think, I don't think we should settle it. Oh, everything's going up. Yeah, it looks good, everything's going up. I mean, that's, we gotta try, we gotta try.
But you gotta look at everything in, in line, even if you're going to change and you're starting like someone else, you still need to know what you got to start with. And, and what, what, what the the next guy is going to be. What is, you know, what he's going to have? Does he have the good equipment and, and everything to do?
I just want to make sure that we keep in the spirit that, you know, we're talking about waste, you know, removal, we're talking about trash service, that we don't get lost in the numbers because the number is significant. We have not had a rate increase this high and we spend weeks talking about rate increases. And we get pretty passionate about rate increases and we should be just, if not more passionate about this because the numbers, dollars and cents are the same. So what direction would the council like to go? Need more bids?
I think it's worth the staff time.
I, you know, I think you don't know what's out there if you don't get more bids to compare.
I, you know, I think you don't know what's out there if you don't get more bids to compare. I agree with Jerry though, the service has been great and they've been doing it for so many years.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we have to consider that too.
That's something we'll take into consideration. But it would be nice to have something to compare to.
No, we've been spoiled, I get it.
But if you have somebody that charges you less and they're really not doing a good job, then you have to go to somebody else.
You don't take into consideration.
So you gotta really research.
Travel too, where they're going to come from.
Yeah, and then bake that into the cost.
You know, pick up death in Baldwin County.
Yeah, bake that into the price.
Yeah. All those clothes.
So they've got a couple of advantages. We may be for a rude awakening here, you know, that this is what, you know, trash pickups got to do in the market.
Why don't we just enter the discussion with the idea that we're going to go look and see what's out there?
Amber, do you want to go ahead and reach out and say other companies? Or I guess council probably should make a motion either to reopening the bid or something.
Well, I don't know if reopen the bid with the same methodology we use then.
We, we need guidance.
I don't know that you want to dis, discount the bid that you already have. It isn't a point where we really don't have to accept yet.
Yeah, nobody's rejecting it anymore.
We're not rejecting it. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
We're just not selecting it.
Yeah, we're not selecting yet.
So you're tabling it, so we need a motion to table it until we receive more bids. We gonna put a timeline on that? I would say by next council meeting, so we're not...
No, that's the type of...
That's 10 days. So maybe the Thursday, we have an extra week, don't we? Yeah. So maybe the Thursday before the next council meeting? Yeah, that would give us two full weeks.
Uh huh.
Two full weeks. We did the Thursday, November 2nd.
I make a motion, we table this until November 2nd?
It'll be tabled until November 7th. We'll be accepting bids until November 7th.
So that involves some cold calling, I think, right?
Yeah, Amber, I'll have to probably, you know, there's only so many companies that do it around here. You know who they are. Okay, so place this bid, table this bid until November 2nd.
I think it's 2nd.
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 Move to 2nd on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, the council committee report, Bud and Finance Scott.
Didn't have a meeting since the last council meeting, so...
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on, propose one for Friday, if we need not Friday. Thank you guys, thank you.
We have one request pending, Bud and Finance, last year line. Want to take that up on Friday? Push it off today. Your talk.
You can push it.
Well, that's the Friday for me, believe me. Oh, yeah, I, yeah.
If we don't really have anything to talk about, maybe let's not force it.
Yeah, I would push it.
Yeah, so the...
I didn't even think about that.
So then that would make the next meeting... Good for Friday, the 10th, 7:45. Second floor city council.
Ask me to go, Corey.
We just met an hour ago. We, we had, we knew we had an impromptu meeting coming up because we had some questions that we were waiting on from the REC regarding the community center. So we shelved our last one's meeting, knowing that this one was going to be imminent. And we heard back from them and decided to meet an hour before the council meeting at 6 o'clock. We reviewed the questions proposed by the REC. And gave some responses, I would go over those.
My team?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just run through and roll. I'll run through all the questions that you want to run through. So the committee responded as well as Jay, so I'll read. First question was, where are they expected to operation hours? We responded 8 to 5 with certain days in the mornings for seniors to come in and walk during the winters, whether that's by volunteer, whatever. Jay didn't have a response to that. Next question is, if there are staffing fees to keep open outside of standard business hours, will BCRC pay those wages? And we just responded, it depends on who collects the rental income in the negotiation of the contracts. No response from Jerry. Does BCRC have representation in final building design? If so, how much weight does BCRC preferences, thoughts carry? Response was, the final building design is complete as it has already been bid. Some changes may be completed as allowed by the contractor for the proposed offices. This is Jay's response was, it seems logical that Baldwin REC would get input on their second floor office space if that's what they choose. But the gym is pretty much defined by its surrounding construction. The second floor configuration would seem appropriate for input, but I would recommend not making changes to the main level plan. Otherwise, I am concerned that our contractor will see this as an entirely new plan and will basically need to rebid the whole thing. Next question, will the in-ground sleeves for volleyball and pickleball be included in initial construction? What we did, ours, we did, I didn't see Jay, so I'm just going to skip over here. That ground sleeve for both volleyball and pickleball stations are provided in the construction project. Removable volleyball and pickleball systems are also included in the bid amount. Floorings scheduled to be stripped, these cords as part of the basic office. If something not included initially, is there flexibility to add equipment many as after initial build? I.e. batting cages, sports simulators, et cetera? Our response was, those items are not currently budgeted, so may require fundraising. Would upstairs office space have network infrastructure to place upon potential movement? Yes, but we don't need to know ASAP if that's their intention as the final plans did not call for offices upstairs. Jay's response, this decision would need to be made very quickly. We are currently bid for three multipurpose rooms on the new second floor. There will be design time involved with documenting an office layout up there in lieu of the design configuration. I assume that there will be some additional construction and furnishing costs as well. I think Lloyd will want a decision and redesign completed ASAP or our schedule will be compromised. Will tables and chairs be owned and stored in-house or need to be rented from a third party? We responded, this depends as final construction costs come in, we're set by specific funding. Jay responded, I'm carrying a number in the overall budget for these items, but again, did not plan on providing a fully furnished second floor office. I think Jay missed over that one. What is fire code capacity? We might need to check with Jay. Jay stated, total occupant load is currently designed at 422 occupants. We switch the second floor to office space in lieu of multipurpose rooms. We will likely drop approximately 19 occupants to around 435 occupants. Really, the gym space is going to be driving occupant load. Nine, who assumes liability for any potential accidents, incidents within the facility? We responded, the city owns the building, so it will be the same as the golf course, Old Square. A long-term contract agreement be completed, created to confirm city will pay all rent, utilities, et cetera. And for a designated long time, we just responded this. If any issues arise during the construction that would impact BCRC operations, does BCRC option to back out when we move into the facility? We just want to know as we specifically need building office space for the rec. Twelve, could exterior windows be added to the office space? We responded, highly doubtful as this is a registered historic building and cutting coals in exterior walls would be a major change in the building. Jay responded, exterior windows cut into the existing stone exterior walls would be problematic from the historic preservation side of things. But we do have a previous schematic design option that includes these solo tubes through the roof to drop natural light on the second floor. There are two openings, one on the north and one on the south. I think we listed it with windows in lieu of access hatches. Windows would need to be operable to allow main staff access to the roof. I think the front wall, the gym on the second floor would have a lot of glass to a lot of views into the gym space, which in itself has many, whatever windows at that height of the second floor, which would also allow view to the exterior.
One jumped out to me that I'm kind of thinking about a little bit differently now, was question nine, the liability portion of potential accidents. I wonder if that might be shared, given that Sullivan Square and the golf course are not consistently operated by the REC, whereas this would be Sullivan Square is. Right. So you kind of got two different situations going there. You have office spaces, so you have slip and falls by employees, which are not exposure that Sullivan Square and the golf course have on an everyday basis. And I'm wondering about that. Because as a tenant, I, you know, as a tenant, you have to typically pay for your liability.
The BGA did have to get liability charged.
What's the office usually?
I just, we want to be clear about that.
Well, if the REC wants to move into that space versus their office that they have now, that's what they're...
Still move, stay downtown, move out there.
Dakota, that'd be Dakota.
Uh huh.
It's an underwriting question.
Right.
Yeah.
But we'd be required.
It's, I, I don't think there's a direct answer. I'm, I'm immediately, I'm thinking of a shared response.
I would assume that they already have some sort of insurance in place through their...
They're trying to increase it.
But our answer here may be...
They're increasing, but what they've got now, what they're going to have.
For their business liability insurance, yeah.
So who's going to take care of that?
Well, they cover their business liability insurance. I, my reading of the question was, they're asking about building and spectators wanting or citizens wanting.
So it's potential accidents slash incidents within the facility, that's everything.
What about damage to the building itself?
That's on us, we own property.
What's that?
We, we own the property, so that's on us. This is more of like a liability.
We own the public.
City.
Could you send those to us?
Yeah, Glenn, can you send those down to me also?
Sure can. Just interested to see what this, we can really perform to.
Right.
We didn't plug in a liability.
Well, we had, we had staff.
Right. Right.
Real.
Right. That's kind of the point of this. Benefit to one situation.
I mean, I don't, but, you know, liability for a business can be, that's how I view personally. And it's, it's a big number and...
Now, you calling this a business or this is...
Liability is liability.
Does it fall under the definition of a business?
No. We're talking, we're just talking about liability, we're talking about risk. So people, you know, and there's more risk if you have people, you know, you know, a typical business has, you know, people sitting in chairs, this, this, this building has people playing sports. So the liability question might be a little more significant. That's why I'm saying it's more an underwriting question than it is, I don't know that we can give a direct answer on it.
I can, I can might not know that the council wants to have maybe Glenn check on that and have them check what their insurance...
If there's any underwriters that cover nonprofit school districts and, you know, any...
I mean, school district would be the same.
I know, but they may have, may be able to have, be part of the pool of nonprofits. They may accept city or rec commission. Because it's funding community.
Jay, you...
Through the budget?
Through their liability.
Their liability, right.
So is the city or does the rec take into staffing costs and maintenance costs?
We kind of said it depends because if they're taking all of revenue that this may generate from rentals.
Why would we want them to need them in there if they're not providing some value?
I, I'm sorry, I thought she was talking, I thought Julie was referring to after normal business hours, like their question.
You're talking about normal business hours, just the normal staffing?
Yeah. Normal staffing and maintenance and that kind of, who pays that?
Well, normal staffing would be on, then. They didn't ask that question.
Well, that's, we've run clear about that.
Yeah, I think that's an important question.
And there'd be an agreement. So this is just an initial, you know, so...
There's a lot more questions that...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I mean, the staffing challenge is just having somebody there. If they're moving offices in their definition, someone's going to be there.
Right.
If you move offices in there, does it suddenly become a business then and it's not a recreational thing anymore?
They're not a business, yeah. They're not a business.
That would just help town with building staff.
And I mean, your staff like that now, it's going to be the staff that's going to be able to see the kids or whatever is playing, you know?
It's true.
You might have to hire some...
Might be a terminal cost of...
It'd be, and I think that's just what we got to work out, right?
Right.
This is a way of reading a true question. But who's going to make the decisions as to what happens on one day at what time?
Well, if they manage it, they would, so them.
So if they were going to play pickleball from 3 to 5, we can't play volleyball till 8:30 in the morning?
Right. Well, you can do, you can, there are a lot of different activities that you can do at the same time, depending on the way the layout works out. You can play volleyball and pickleball at the same time. As I recall, being one of the scenarios, yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah, there's room for two different hemispheres of activity, I recall. I haven't looked at that map in a long time.
Yeah, it's been a minute. Yeah, I think we should do a, probably a bet.
They're in the best position to...
Epic glass.
We're going to be looking for hiring some people that, you know, this is, you have to manage that schedule. I mean, that's what they do.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of it is, it's either the REC manages it or the city's managing it.
Right, and we aren't...
That's, that's where we're at.
We aren't that skilled at that. They do a good job, they do, so I would love to have them manage that.
Yeah, nothing's changed, I'll speak personally. The REC is the ideal tenant for the community center. And that's, that has not changed now. I don't see any reason that would ever change. The city managing that is, is a less ideal scenario. Which is, we have, we...
And we'll have no choice.
At the committee level, we've talked through a lot of that scenario. And there's possibilities for how to do that. It's just a matter, we need their answer first.
We ask for a response from our rec, so we should be able to come back to the next meeting, give you guys an update on which way, what the REC's thinking, and then that'll help us drive what conversation we're having. Okay. Anything good?
That's all we have.
Public safety soon.
We do not meet this month. Um, next meeting is December 14th. Yeah, November 14th at 4:00.
I'll probably be asking again, but I'll try.
Public Works 2.
Uh, yeah, we met on the 17th, we met on the 12th. They cleaned out the culvert that runs under First Street at High. And they want to thank Terry Baker for helping by using high-pressure water lines to water out the culvert. Public Works clearly been working on widening the roads in the Howard Memorial section of Oakwood Cemetery. The new asphalt roller that we purchased was used and it worked great. Sidewalk on North 6th and State Lake Road was repaired after taking out a section of the sidewalk to repair the broken water line valve. Streetsweeper will be used this week downtown to prepare for Maple Leaf Festival. Orchard Lane Box Culvert Project is awarded to WCI Construction. Their plan is to start this winter. They have until May 20, 24 and have 45 days once they start to complete the project. They have until May 2024 and have 45 days once they start to complete the project. No updates on the crosswalk at Santa Fe Drive and 56 Highway. Carpenter Construction has completed the concrete work with a pad for the radiators and silencers outside of the, outside and the pedestal for the generators inside the plant. Jeff is meeting scheduled with Mike from Midstates to discuss the new devastation timeline. Midstates will be bidding out Transformer with a joint bid with a couple of other cities to try to make, take advantage of getting a better price. Whole Fairbanks unit and new spare parts inventory is available at the VA Hospital in Tennessee. They're checking into this to see if it would be cost effective to go down there and get spare parts. Next meeting is November 9th at 9:00.
One question I have, Julie, did we, maybe you can recall, I can't. Did we ever decide on a final resting place for that devastation?
Yes, over there we are, in town.
So we decided on that lot?
Yeah, I thought that's over there.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't remember. I had, somebody asked. Cause the only request they had, it was, was they didn't want it to be in New York, we've all expressed that, so. Just to keep it on, I guess when we start getting side designs.
They talked about putting a wall. They talked about putting a wall up.
That's been.
I thought that was.
Yeah.
Wow, I can imagine.
Either they showed it or exposed it and it would be, be hidden. Cypress trees in the tree.
Towers and, but it would be more than that.
These parts and things that they have found in this hospital, was it, it was in Tennessee, right Julie?
Yes.
They are very hard to come by, very, very hard to come by. And if, like we said, go ahead and see, see if you can do it, see if you can get to it. You know, I think they have to make a bid on that, isn't that correct? They have to bid on the parts that they want?
I don't know if they have to bid on them. I think they just.
Remember they said they, that it's gonna try to buy it for pennies on the dollar or something to that effect? But one's or another party that they were discussing this with to go in?
Yeah, Amigo and Portman, I think.
To go in to get these parts. If they can do this, we'll support that because those would be important parts that we could use that in our stuff where we can't get new ones.
Well, the guys always trying to look for deals, basically, um, for spare parts so that we have spare parts when we're meeting them. And they've gotten, um, parts in this kinda same situation before. And it's really been beneficial as far as price.
Yeah, they were, they were.
They said buy new.
They went up north and, and found one of these things before and went up north and got some parts off of it, which is really been an asset or is an asset, would be an asset to us on cost because they just can't get them. There's one, one thing I wanted, we, we didn't discuss it and it wasn't even brought up at that time. But I run Lawrence Avenue quite frequently and I was seeing that Lawrence Avenue is absolutely falling apart. It's got old, it's got a brick size hole that's coming in on the, on the southbound side and it's slipping off into the ditch on.
Yeah, I've noticed that recently. Yeah, it's a little rough.
Well, the west side would be county.
Until the west side, yes.
That's a county.
Is that a county road? That was where I was going with that.
Six, depending on, depending on which, how far down Lawrence Street you get.
Okay, it's past the school.
Yeah, I mean, technically, no. I don't think you get in city limits there until that, that high, almost high street.
You, you know where, uh.
So, but that's our truck route. So can we designate a county road as our truck route? Okay. I guess that's why I always assumed it was a city route.
Yeah.
Chris, you know where Kristoff's lived?
Yeah.
Okay, this is just, what, 250 feet maybe or, or a little more in, in the, on the road. Would that be right, Susan? Pretty close, isn't it?
Yeah, that'd be a county.
And it's falling apart. It's coming off.
The other thing, uh, we discussed about, uh, maybe getting a light at.
That was another thing, yes.
Uh, light at 56 and Morris Avenue because it's so dark there, light to make that intersection.
It is a grid.
And they were, the guys were gonna check. They think Evergy is probably does that area. But they can put up, they can put up a light and then they charge per month for it, just like you do if you have one.
That farmhouse on the corner, I don't think that's city limits, but the new one, south of it is.
I wonder.
Then it's actually those where it could be.
They were gonna check on that and let me know.
I bet it's Evergy because for, um, Intermsign, I believe you have to work with Evergy out there to allow.
And I believe that there's a hole there already. Anyway, that to be each one.
He's winning, Scott.
We did not meet.
Were you out of town?
And didn't tell me so I had to get the update last time.
You were there.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
But the surveys have landed. Hopefully everybody got theirs and responded and, um, haven't got an update as far as response right yet.
Are we gonna send out another reminder on that or?
How long's it open for?
We are, Ryan, Ryan told me Friday, he had 200 responses.
200 as of Friday?
Oh, we need to push that harder than.
We can maybe open longer if we want.
Yeah, they, they like to return in two weeks, but.
I think so, yeah.
200 out of 48, so.
They're all digital or?
No, somewhere there's been.
Not on. They, they sent them out in the mail to everybody and you can also respond.
Okay.
Well, there's one that probably.
So.
You probably could.
You available on the panel, Julie?
The survey's on Facebook right now.
Survey's on Facebook?
Uh, yes, it's on the website. It's actually in the banner of the website. It's, it's easily accessible and I wouldn't push it out.
Okay.
Where's the next council meeting?
So we'll, we'll have our next strategic planning committee meeting on the 10th, 2:00 PM, November 10th.
Election Day. Election Day.
Yeah.
Who's that?
Where's the camera?
Please take your survey.
November?
Then you let Ryan know. If you can get an update on the 10th, that'd be great.
I'll play it on you.
We are having a meeting.
Wait, two, three, well, I'll make it.
I'll bring cake. City administrator, staff comments, anything further?
Further.
Anything for the council? All right, I'll entertain that. What should we do?
Move it, John.
Second.
Move to 2nd on favor, say aye.
Aye.